Good evening. I call the meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Wilson absent. Councilmember Black absent. Councilmember Derringer?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Piper?
Here.
Here. Pledge of allegiance. Christian, would you like to lead us this evening?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Any presentations, proclamations, announcements?
There are none this evening.
Thank you. Approve the order of the agenda. Motion to approve. I don't see any blue folder.
Second by council. By Mayor Pro Tem Piper. And since no one voiced an objection, I'm going to record that as a 3-0 vote for approval of the agenda. Moving on, Madam Mayor.
I'm going to go out the same way I came in, not being able to get this. See, no blue folder items. Any public comment on non-agenda items? Hearing none. Consent calendar. Wishes of the council. Move the consent calendar.
I'll second.
Any opposed?
None.
Moved. No excluded consent calendar items. No commission items. Moving to number 11, public hearings, 11A, consideration of an ordinance amending Chapter 1728 of the Munich Code regarding accessory dwelling units and JADUs.
Good evening, Mayor Mersch, members of the City Council. This is an ordinance amendment for municipal code in regards to accessory dwelling units. Just to give you a little bit of a background, in 2019, the ADU laws had changed. They went to January 1st. Shortly afterwards, the council adopted ordinances numbers 364-U and 364 in order to address the changes in the 2019 ADU laws. And in September 2020, new legislation went into effect under AB 3182 regarding requiring certain cities to allow certain ADUs and JADUs with building permits. If the city didn't act within 60 days, an application would be deemed approved. In September 2021, AB 345 passed, which required or dealt with the sale or conveyance of certain ADUs. And on August 22, 2022, council adopted ordinance number 376 to comply with AB 3182 and AB 345. Similarly, in September 2022, the state passed SB 897 that further amended ADU law. The city reacted by adopting ordinance number 381 on January 9th, 2023, to comply with those requirements. And then more recently this year, AB 2533 was passed addressing unpermitted ADU and JADUs and SB 1211, which dealt with replacement parking requirements and multifamily accessory dwelling units. So this ordinance addresses the new legislation passed in 2024 earlier this year under AB 2533 and SB 1211. This item went before the planning commission at the October meeting, on October 15th, and they voted to that, they recommended that the city council adopt the ordinance that passed 4-0. One member of the commission was absent. They adopted resolution number 2024-13, which is part of the staff report. And so some of the changes made in the proposed ordinance dealt with, we removed the landscape section. It sort of conflicts with the fire department requirements from home hardening, having landscaping so close to ADUs. There's also view preservation concerns. However, owners may still plant landscaping on the properties at their discretion, subject to the city's review. Other changes made in the ordinance dealt with, we added a definition for livable space. We addressed fees that the city can collect. We made that clarification there. Percolation test is needed for septic systems. Owner occupancy requirements are no longer required on or after January 1st, 2020, for ADUs that comply. And there's a requirement there for rent reporting to provide an estimate of the projected annualized rents from the owners, and that's really for housing inventory reporting. There's been some changes to the language with the setbacks. The change is consistent, changed to be consistent with setbacks of existing structures. The side and rear yard setback requirement is still the same at four feet, and the front yard setback is still 30 feet. In terms of windows and doors, they cannot have direct line of sight to adjoining properties. For allowed stories, our code says that there are one story is allowed. If attached to a primary residence with a basement, then the ADU can have a basement as well. For utilities, utilities may need to be separate from the main residence. This may be subject to connection, and a fee may be required. And there's some other formatting changes there that are minor made throughout the document. And the redlined version is attached in attachment 2. Under the California Environmental Quality Act, we find that the proposed ordinance is exempt under California Public Resources Code Section 121080.17. SEQA does not apply to the adoption of ordinance by the city implementing the ADU law. And so we find the ordinance is statutorily exempt from SEQA. Our recommendation is that the city council open the public hearing, receive public testimony, close the public hearing, find the proposed ordinance statutorily exempt from review under SEQA pursuant to Public Resources Code Section 21080.17, and adopt resolution ordinance number 385, amending Rolling Hills Municipal Code Chapter 17.28 regarding ADU and JADUs.
And then, Madam Mayor, I just had one brief clarification. There's a technical error. For some reason, in the ordinance that we uploaded via PDF, the statutory references such that, hey, when, you know, part of the code would say "section blah blah blah" of the Rolling Hills Municipal Code by reference, and converting that to a PDF, it kind of got rid of that, so it just has a blank placeholder. We, of course, have the correct information, and so in your guys' motion tonight, it would simply be to direct staff to ensure that that technical error is corrected such that it's not a blank when we refer to another part of the code, but it's the accurate code section. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor.
Thank you for the clarification. Before I open the public hearing, are there any questions? For John, for staff on this? I asked the questions beforehand. Not asked the questions beforehand. I normally go to the planning commission meeting, so I'm sorry, I don't know the answer to these. Normally, I would have been able to ask them at the planning commission. But I do have a couple. Some of these changes that were made, a lot of it looks like they were just cleaning up some language. You know, they may not have been substantive changes. But there are a couple in here that I have some questions, and I'm hoping you can shed some light on it. Not that I'm thinking of rejecting, or, you know, not voting to approve this. But on page 20, at the top of the page, that existing state law prohibits a city from denying a permit to legalize an unpermitted ADU that was constructed before January 1st, 2018, which has now been moved to January of 2020. My question is, is that only apply, if I'm reading this, it says an unpermitted ADU. What if somebody had a barn, or a guest house, or a stable that they've converted to some sort of a living facility? Would that fall under not being able to stop, "stop" is not the right word, but require it to be made to conform to ADU requirements?
So that very top part up there, that first sentence, it says, "subject to" it says, "limiting exceptions, existing state and law prohibits the city from denying a permit to legalize an unpermitted ADU that was constructed before January 1st, 2018." So that really just pushes that cutoff date to
Right, I understand that, but
And so, you know, your question is very astute. I would say that, no, not collectively. Now, I'm not trying to be cagey here, but obviously, an unpermitted ADU or JADU, to me, means certain things. It's not simply, I have a, you know, a barn or a stable with some modicum of living, you know, features to it. So it would really kind of depend on the way that question is posed, and long and short of it, it really would be a case-by-case scenario, that if someone could show up and say, "Hey, this actually was an unpermitted ADU or JADU," and, you know, we would kind of go back and forth amongst them. But so, no, it is not a collective holistic, "Hey, if you just happen to put a sink in a bed somewhere, now all of a sudden, you get it no matter what."
It would have had to have been, it would have had to have met whatever ADU standards there were at the time, even though we didn't have any here.
Well, correct. I mean, even at that point, the state still had some.
Right, we just didn't.
Yeah.
Okay. Then continuing on on that page, going down into the next one, replacement parking. We don't allow overnight parking on our streets. So how does this affect us, or does it affect us? We're not requiring, it says that prohibit from requiring off-street parking spaces to be replaced. Okay, so somebody makes their garage an ADU, or a parking space into an ADU, and so now they don't have a place to park, they may not have a place to park on their property. Does this mean that they can park on the street overnight?
No, so what this, the short answer to your question is, no.
Okay.
Any generally applicable parking restriction, just because you build an ADU doesn't mean, hey, I am now exempt from that. A pretty typical one is some cities have residential parking permits. That allows the residents to park overnight, but not, you know, guests. And so just because you build an ADU doesn't mean, hey, I can just park my car out there regardless if I have it. The same rules would apply to here. We just cannot, we, you know, based on ordinance, cannot force them to say, well, now that you've removed this, you must then build it somewhere else.
They have to park outside the city if they don't have anywhere else?
It is up to that property owner to get rid of their car, ride their horse, et cetera, et cetera.
And I don't actually think this affects any properties in our city, just knowing how our, you know, properties are set up. I mean, people have long driveways, you can at least park two cars on there, and the code allows you to have tandem parking.
I understand. I just like, when I look at my property, I don't have a long driveway, I don't have that. If I built an ADU and I didn't have to have a parking space for it, they'd have to park on the street, so.
Yeah, but it no longer requires you to have a, you know, covered parking space. So you don't have to have a garage, you can have uncovered parking space that can be tandem.
The thing about the exception to the landscape section has been deleted, was that something?
No, that's something that staff had added in there, and that's really to, part of it's to address some of the fire department requirements, because now they have, you know, requirements.
So that was solely for the fire department, that's what I read.
That's part of it. The other part is, the way it's written currently is it requires a lot of landscaping, almost to, you know, really to screen the ADU.
Right.
And you have these requirements that our homeowner association has to, you know, meet a certain architectural standard in there. And to meet that standard and then to screen it just seems sort of
I understand. I just wanted to see where that was coming from. And last but not least, on page 21, under other changes, it says, "The ADU permit processing fee is determined by the Director of Community Development." What if we didn't have that title here on this, within this city? Is there?
And/or it's designated?
Yeah, I mean, is there some wording that can be put in there? I would hate, we, somebody needs to be able to approve it.
Yeah, correct. And so, you know, I guess in the, that is a good pickup. I would say under the city manager form of government, that Madam City Manager is empowered to basically do anything her subordinates may or may not do. But that's what, a very good idea to, we can add, should that be the will of the council, add some language to that section, which I believe is B, subsection 2, "Determined by the Director of Community Development," or other city official as designated by the city manager.
All right, any other, anybody else going to pick this apart?
No, no, I'm good. Is, can we just, as best we can, when people come in and they have a guest house, can we just write the words "ADU" across the top of it? It's going to help us when we do our housing element again. If we can start making it so any guest house, we just say, hey, we're going to write down as ADU, you cool? And if they're not, then I get it, we'll kind of whatever, but we should be pushing what that looks like. Because the more we have, the easier the housing element is going to get to stay within the philosophy of where we are.
Until they start saying that you're going to be mandated to rent them, which is why a lot of people aren't applying for them.
The freight trains come in anyways.
I understand, which reminds me, I'm sorry, I did have one other thing, and it had to do on the owner occupants. I had two more. The owner occupancy portion, why did we remove that? Page 21. No longer required if an ADU meets the ordinance and was created on or after January 1st, 2020.
There were provisions in there, ADU law changes like every year, but there was provisions in the ADU law that says that, that required owners to occupy the property.
Was what my memory served me, that there was a requirement that there's a, one of the, something on the property has to have a resident occupancy, so was this something that we came up with?
No, so the, yeah, so the, that change in the owner occupancy, as Director Signo noted, if you guys want to probably, I can probably find it in about three or four minutes.
But something had happened.
That is not a Rolling Hills
We're just bringing ourselves up to code. And then the last one had to do with, and if I can find it here, the reporting of the rentals. What I'm concerned about is that is just, I realize that's a housing requirement. What, the housing department requirement, what if there is?
Correct.
No rental.
And so that is, that actually is in Councilmember Derringer, if you don't mind. Councilmember Derringer asked that question as well. That is not necessarily required to be in our ordinance. Besteston Krieger, as you can imagine, deals with HCD in passing these ADU ordinances up and down the state. We have found this to be best practice, potentially going back to one of the topics that Mr. Mayor Pro Tem mentioned, that now we have some information and some potential data for HCD for the arena. But that is entirely your guys' prerogative. That rental reporting, unlike some of the other modifications, is not state mandated. So if you guys wanted to remove that, that would be entirely your guys' prerogative.
Well, I'm, I, excuse me.
And so to answer your question, if it's not rented, then it's not rented. We mark it down as, you know, at 123 Main Street, ADU, you know, not rented.
I mean, because if you were letting, you know, your caregiver live there or something like that, that that would no longer, if that somehow takes it.
Can we ask the information and not share it?
See, and I don't care whether they're rented.
No, I'm going to deal with that, but can we ask the information, so we have the information?
But are we required to disclose it?
Do we have to disclose?
Yeah, so I mean, that would be, obviously, we would have to be able, we would be required to disclose that an ADU exists there, but to the specific dollar amount with, under the, with the caveat that I guess a court down the road could maybe over, not overrule this, but take a different approach. I would think that, yes, we could say, that is exempt from the PRA. You, you know, you as the public, the benefit of knowing an ADU is there is one thing, but, you know, basically looking into someone's pocketbook to say, how much are you charging in rent, is not necessarily something that we would, we would give on an individual case-by-case house, you know, property basis. Maybe at the end, we would say, hey, we have 37 ADUs with a average rent, or median rent of X dollars. I could see maybe doing like that, but no, to answer your question, we would be able to say, no, at least at the outset, we're not going to give it.
Because how much is rented for, to me, is totally irrelevant. Like, it doesn't matter. The fact that it is being used.
Yeah, occupied is the question.
I think it's more binary. Is it being used, yes or no, by someone staying in it? Whether it's your mother-in-law, whether it's your kid, whether it's somebody else, whether you rent it or not, I don't think, it doesn't matter. Because that, the point of it is, are we making housing
Available.
Available. And whether someone wants to charge $700 a month and deal with the brain damage of what that is, or just let them stay there, or, to me, that, the count is what matters for, going back to what we're going to have to deal with down the road. How much money we get, no one cares. We, well, I mean, we don't care as a city.
It's just that there's been discussion that since people got wise and started saying ADUs could be counted towards your arena numbers, that the HCD is taking a very hard look at if it's not being used for the purpose that we wanted it to be used for, which is, you know, X percent of below
Media.
And extremely low. That we're not going to get credit for putting them in, into the inventory. So that, that's just my concern on that, but I guess the issue is, you know, under, on page 48, there is a requirement, as it exists right now, that if someone has not provided within 90 days after the issuance of a building permit their actual rent charged for the ADU or JADU, then this, the city is deeming them to be in violation of the code and can send a notice of violation, and then they get another 30 days to submit the report, and after that, then we enforce it. So I guess the question is?
Hold it, she's going.
Okay, but at least, I don't want to put words in the council's mouth. There is some desire to at least get at least a reporting requirement on occupancy slash use, or no?
To me, it'd be great, and we let them know is, we don't care who's there, we don't care what you're charging. Is it occupied by somebody? And then we say, yes, and we're like, look, we have an ADU, check. And that's all we do, because who's got time? We're going to go track everyone down and find out what the rental agreements are. Right? I think we just, we want it so we can tell the story we want to tell, and not, I mean, really? I mean, you guys have free time, and you guys want to go start banging on doors for people who aren't going to respond?
Yeah, I mean, this is about putting housing stock out there, allegedly.
It's not.
This is what the, these, HCD is about. If it's there, then it's, it's there. On the other hand, I mean, I don't want to get the city fined. The last time the city wasn't in compliance with something that we did, we saw what ultimately happened to us by not being in compliance, but.
And once again, obviously, I can't speak for HCD, that is talking about brain damage. The, I can't fathom them pushing back against something like that. This is in furtherance of these goals. Their goal is to get people in these kind of alternative forms of housing. And so, once again, if that's the direction of the council tonight, I, you know, maybe give myself and staff some leeway to basically say, hey, make sure that's copacetic. And when we come back for second reading, that will all be dialed up, if that's the direction of the council tonight.
Well, but we have to do it, like, we've got to approve it before the end of the year, so.
No, correct. I mean, so we'll come back for the second reading, so it'll be, it'll be, basically, I can, I'll be able to craft the motion tonight that it is locked in.
I mean, to me, the requirement should just be, we need the shortest email in the world that says, yes, it's being occupied. Thank you.
And in essence, if someone is allowing their, their employees who work at the property or care, take for individuals on the property as a, as a form of service that they can get rent and live on the property, then that is a benefit to low-income people, that they're being able to get either free or diminished rent as a result of their employment on the premises. So I think it fits within the design that they're talking about. But, but I guess the issue I had was, was whether we're going to be forcing people to account for how much rent they're charging, and if they don't, that we're going to hunt them down and, and make them comply. Well, obviously, that's not what I want, or I wouldn't have brought it up.
So I think we get, in my mind, if you guys are okay with this, we get rid of all that stuff. All we want is a tally, that we have 37 of them, and 28 of them are being used for some sort of occupancy.
Got it, understood.
And then
I'm good with that.
Yeah, we keep it, and then we let them know that no one's going to check, because then the numbers will get higher.
Okay, so that could be in terms of occupancy in provision.
When we, when we get to the
Okay.
thing, I have them all.
I just needed to know the amendment that you were suggesting in response to Mayor Mersch's question, what provision were you talking about putting that in?
So is that the one, is that from reference to the community development director?
Yes.
I forget it, but I, but the way I was going to craft the motion was to simply say, any references to the community development director in this, where we will add to the following phrase, "and/or other city employee as designated by the city manager."
Okay, got it. Okay, so that's going to be throughout the
Throughout.
The version, okay. And I'd like to ask a procedural question here. We didn't have a member of the public here earlier when we so we were just asking questions on this. We're obviously talking about the housing, the ADU thing. So I would, this is a public hearing, so since you're here, Mr. Wall, do you have any, I'd like to open the public hearing, and do you have any comments on this?
No, I don't.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, hearing done, we'll close the public hearing. Wishes of the council?
I make, it's not really an emotion, right, a finding?
No, so, yeah, so the, give me one second.
My choices here are
Yeah, so we kind of just reverse them. We would introduce for first reading by title only, ordinance number 385 regarding ADUs and JADUs with the following, and at the end of this, you can just say, so moved. We're going to get rid of that rental reporting section and replace it with a simplified reporting requirement of whether or not the ADU and JADU is being used and/or occupied, subject to further inquiry by the city attorney and staff. We're going to fix all the code references in the online version, which are inaccurate to the accurate code reference, and then change any reference to the community development director or director to include the following phrase, "or other city employee designated by the city manager," and find the ordinance exempt from SEQA.
I make that motion.
I would second that motion.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Thank you very much. Thank you, John. Okay. No old business, new, new business, consideration, item number 13A, consideration of approving First Amendment to the Professional Service Agreement with wildlife specialist and consultant to provide additional coyote educational or abatement services.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. Back in February of 2024, the City Council authorized staff to enter into a six-month trial contract with Fernando Rivera of Wildlife Specialists and Consultants, WSC, for coyote abatement services. At that time, city staff was working closely with residents and WSC, but also with the LA County Department to find ways that we can abate coyotes in our community. This intent was to conduct a trial for six months to see if, in fact, services provided by WSC, as well as LA County Ways and Measures, would be able to achieve some form of coyote abatement, but most importantly, educating the community in regards to reducing the number of coyotes, but also how to abate them. Thank you. Sorry about that. WSC's contract expired in August, and the intent was to bring it back in September for a, a one-year renewal. Unfortunately, at that time, other things came up that we had to push it. So we are here this evening requesting the City Council authorize one-year extension, I saw, an extension through June 30th, 2025, for the continued services of Fernando Rivera. It is important to note that the city staff is also working closely with the other agencies, being Paul's Verdi Estates, Rancho Paul's Verdi's, and the City of Rolling Hills Estates, to build a more, a more robust coyote management plan that would be implemented with the City of Rolling Hills. I also want to note that this First Amendment, with a not-to-exceed amount of $15,000, is budgeted for fiscal year 2425. And to date, there are no funds that have been expended. City staff does believe that the services provided by WSC have been valuable, and we do believe that residents are working closely with Fernando outside of our contract and with the Los Angeles County Department of Ways and Measures to ensure that coyotes are being abated. Madam Mayor, that concludes my Madam Mayor, that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Any questions from, from the council?
No.
Um, I'll, I'll hold off on my question about the coyote management, the forthcoming coyote management plan until we see it. I was just wondering if there was, it, no, I won't. I was, I, I, I was, sorry.
It's okay.
I, I was just wondering, will the coyote management plan at this time contain, um, a, a use for the services?
Yes, ma'am.
That would be a component
Yeah.
of what you'd be doing. Okay.
And Rolling Hills Estates and Rancho Palos Verdes has services included?
Everybody but PV.
Exactly.
So I just, so I just wanted to make sure before we approve something like this, that whatever it is you're coming out with would be including a recommendation for this kind of service. Okay. Now I have no further questions. Any comments from the public on this? Hearing none. Close that portion of the issue. Wishes of the council?
I'd make a motion to approve, um, the contract that is presented in item thirteen A.
I'll second it.
Thank you very much. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No opposed? Thank you. Um, let's see. Matters from the City Council? Are already? Fourteen A?
We are, Madam Mayor.
We are.
Consideration of directing staff to draft a legislative and policy platform.
Good evening, uh.
Yes, I'm going, I knew I asked that, but I'm, this is not, okay, wait, sorry.
Good, good evening, uh, Mayor and Council. Uh, tonight, uh, staff is presenting this discussion item for, uh, you at the request of Mayor Mersch, uh, seeking direction as to whether the council would want a specific legislative and policy platform that could be used to allow staff, uh, in collaboration with the mayor, uh, to draft and send letters advocating in support of opposition based on said platform. Um, this platform would consolidate any positions, uh, that this council has taken previously on various bills, uh, providing, uh, guidance both to city staff, uh, to our delegates, uh, like Councilmember Derenger, to the League, or to the COG, or whatnot. Um, and then it would, uh, assist us in communicating, uh, on these issues and enable prompt action in a matter that required, uh, immediate action, uh, by the city. The primary purpose, again, is to guide staff in monitoring bills in interest to the city. Uh, and if a bill in a situation that requires immediate action, uh, came before us, uh, the council would be notified by the city manager, uh, but the city manager would have authority to send some letter based on the existing platform, uh, to, uh, express the city's position, uh, on that particular bill, and then at a subsequent city council meeting, uh, that would be brought forward to you in a more formal setting for formal action taken by the council. So really, this is a discussion amongst yourselves as to whether you would like staff to pursue crafting something. Uh, included in the staff report was what the City of Rancho Palos Verdes has used for recent years. Uh, and so staff, uh, you know, awaits your guidance and direction. And if you have any other questions, please let me know.
Thank you. Any questions of staff from council?
Wanted to commend the mayor for this suggestion. I think it's
Thank you. Wait till you hear my questions. You may not.
All right, all right.
It sounds like you may have to get a bit of a turn, so.
Okay, so no questions? Um, thank you very much. Any comments from the public on this? Hearing none. Close the public comment portion. Um, any comments from my fellow council members?
One, I don't deal with these things. You deal with it all the time. It seems like a lot of work for how little that I feel like is needed. I only feel like every once in a while, you bring a topic back that you're like, hey, this one feels like it's on the whatever. Majority of the time, my guess is you're out saying stuff that is within the realm of, I mean, you know how we kinda think. So I just don't wanna create a thing that's gonna be more work, more stuff for the three or four times a year we might need it. 'Cause me personally, I'd like to, I think we respond to too much stuff. I, I'd rather be quieter.
Well, and I think that was, that was my motivation on this, is for years, we got involved very little. We tried to stay under the radar. I felt that what was happening over the last couple of years was the legislations and so forth that were capping. We were being asked to weigh in and make an opinion and support or oppose a lot more things, and I was concerned about that, number one. And then they also, the other thing that concerned me, that drove me to ask this, is oftentimes, there's such a short turnaround with us meeting only every two weeks. It didn't really allow us to, to do it, and then it put it in a position where we were forced, we couldn't even discuss it amongst ourselves about what we wanted to do, because what I've found, maybe this is just me personally, but like, when I look over RPVs, there are so many things that even if you say, well, generally, this is something important to you, like, generally, lo- local control is very important to me. And if someone were to say, what, do I wanna give the city manager the authority to support anything that has to do with local control? I see so many things that come through. It looks like it's all about local control, and there's this eh at the end that I go, I, I'm sorry, I, I can't support that. So that I'm almost wondering, are we better off going back to our original? So many of these things are personal voter-type things, and I just don't know if we should be, be taking.
And Prop G, that's one that makes it easier for us to tax everybody, right? That's local control, says it all over thing.
Right.
No way would we support that, damn thing, right?
So.
So when I look at that.
Prop G is the, the increase, increase in the board supervisors and the executive CEO.
I might have the wrong one. There's one that is local control, so we can, e- easier for us to, um, raise taxes on people, whatever, whatever. And so all over it says local control and whatever, which all feels to me like we would put you in a bind, 'cause I'd be like, no way. I understand where B's coming from, 'cause B's actually out there having to talk to people about this stuff. But I think we hit so many topics, I have no idea how you put a thing down. So are we gonna talk about Gaza? Like, which side are we taking on that? Like, no way, right?
Well, and I
But I, but we, that's my thing. I just don't wanna put anyone else in the bind, and typically, we don't respond, and we've done little more than we have.
And that concerns me.
And I don't like it.
And I, I think, B, and to all due respect to the League and to the COG, a lot of things that they support or oppose, I don't think that are necessarily in the interests of our, of Rolling Hills, of our community. And so, that, that's, that's our thing. I mean, we choose you to be our delegate, and you, you know, you give, give your input. I, I, I just don't know this. It was one of these things, when I brought this up, I thought it should be a good idea. My intent was to be able to streamline things so that we weren't having, uh, so many things on the agenda and having to weigh in with things coming to us, and I don't know if maybe it was just this last couple of years that I noticed that that happening more. But I remember when I first came here, we, we never took positions on anything, and now that I see, I went through, for example, the RPV one, you know, I crossed off a bunch of ones that I, that I personally wouldn't support.
And Jim's not even here.
And, and that's, and, and so Jim's not here, and he would be one of the ones, and, and Pat's not here, so maybe, maybe I'm misguided in this, and I need to hear from.
Well, I, what I would say, I, what I'd rather do is, could we, between now and next year, just for, for the next twelve months, could we just, every time we write a thing, could we just put that thing in a one pile? And every time we say we're not going to, have another one, so it, we have this meeting again, and we find out there was three topics, then this is overkill for what we're talking about. If we go back then, we're like, well, we actually did sign fifteen things. We did sign fifteen things, and then we didn't sign these other twenty, then that would make more sense to have some more structure. But right now, I feel like we're creating structure to chase something that.
It just seemed to me like we did, I would say that, B, I'd guess maybe we did like ten in the last year, maybe?
Count to ten.
Oh, I didn't count them either, but I mean, just my.
I would say it was between five and ten, but, uh, but about six to seven of those were specific to the public safety bills. So we sent, uh, like, five to seven letters specific to public safety.
Well, all at once. A- and for me, the other part too is, in general, I always wanna be the fourth signature. The rest of PV's on board, and then do we wanna join them? 'Cause I don't think we, I don't feel like we should be in front of anything. I think we make all the topics bad when we join. So I'd rather be like, oh, the peninsula is okay with this.
And we have.
And we've done that sometimes. To me, that makes more sense, because there's so many things that make it, so when we, we come across like whiners.
And, um, we did our due diligence by reaching out to Rolling Hills Estates. They have something similar to this, but they don't have a policy, but they do meet, um, during their war, uh, their workshops for budget, and they discuss things that they would like to support, but it's not specific to this. This is the only example that we were able to find.
Correct. Yeah, typically, uh, Rolling Hills Estates, uh, somewhere in the beginning of the legislative session will look at what's coming down the pike, and they will just present a, uh, kind of a generalized, here's what's, what we see as happening in Sacramento. And this usually comes, I think, shortly after they do the, uh, the, the trip up for contract cities. Uh, and then they will do a report out and, you know, take any direction from council at that time, you know, based on what they heard.
I feel like it's not like, unfortunately, any of us can get off this job, right? We're stuck here.
Well, we can.
So because we're here, it's not like it changes all the time, and we have this new person, and their viewpoints are different and whatever. I mean, I feel like if B was there and had to say out loud, she knows what Jim's thinking, I mean, pretty close, right? You got this, I, I have very little concern about this stuff, as long as we kinda keep it as tight as we can, but I think we just keep track of it, and let's see what's at.
Yeah, yeah, 'cause my concern was never about anything that
Nothing's happened that's bad.
Yeah, ours was about the issue of having to get a signed something through council to, to the legis-
That speed has only been a problem once a year, uh, twice a year at tops. The rest of the time, it's, it's here, read it, and then we sign it.
I wasn't trying to make things more difficult. I was trying to make them smoother, but that, this is one of those things where, when you actually see what would be involved, uh, maybe you're, you're.
I, I would say, I, I understand that they do a lot more at RPV than we even have need to do.
Right.
I mean, because they have commercial, and they have all these other issues.
Right, right.
Um, but I do think it's important, because what happens, I mean, maybe we could look at what positions we've taken, because it has been on a very finite set of issues. And then they have these situations in which, B, because we're bringing every issue to the, the council, when they change the bill, then any amendment, all of a sudden, all of the
You have to go back and.
You know, don't apply anymore. You gotta send in a letter of, of opposition or approval per each, each amendment. So it'd be helpful to have something for that, like, once we've taken a position to have staff be able to say, well, you know, the essence of our objection still applies. They, they didn't really change anything.
Is there something that you could do, B, perhaps, to provide us, you know, with work that, I'm sure you've got, knowing you, you still have all of your notes from when you were the president of the League?
Yeah.
Um, but types, just taking a look at the things that we did take a position
Well, isn't the, isn't, I mean, to me, instead of going backwards.
There might be a use for it going forward.
Instead of going backwards, let's, when the next one comes up, let's put it on, let's have it as our next part of our meeting. And my feeling is, all we say is, hey, we're gonna write a letter that says this, and then is, we're gonna use, we're gonna write another letter that is on the same pile based upon the fact that we all agreed that we're okay with the red and the pink, but not the yellow. And as long as it's still in that, we'll make a, you know, trust that you guys will make a right decision, then we'll make a, we'll send out another letter if we need to keep sending them on the same thing. Because honestly, it's the first time you've said that out loud. I didn't realize that we had to write a new one every single time.
Yes.
But, but there's no reason in my mind we can't send a new one this time.
And, and sometimes they're in committee, and they're making these, these changes, and then you need to get it up, because it's gonna be before we can meet again. So it's important for that, because otherwise, then you're, yeah.
To when we do it, we'll just add that as part of the thing, and if, if we have to write a second letter because it changed, then as long as it, that we're basically saying the same thing, we just keep sending them. I'd, I'd just rather make this a, and see how it goes.
See, I told you, P, not to thank me in advance for bringing me up.
But it may would be helpful, I mean, to have in a, I mean, it may not be that difficult to account for what positions we took.
Now that it's on our.
Kinda glean from, that would be helpful.
Now that it's on our radar, we can take a look at it going forward and see if this issue needs to come back some other time.
We have some time, because the legislature doesn't come back until January, you know, so.
So is there a motion on this?
Uh.
I would, well, I would make a motion that we, uh, come, come back with a report from staff regarding the positions we have taken in the past, and that we further discuss what kind of.
Oh, I thought we said we were gonna do going forward instead of going backward.
I mean, just 'cause, to me, I feel like we're drowning on a whole bunch of levels with this landslide and the sirens and the things and the whatever. I'd rather just wait till the next one, and we use that one as our little case study. So when you hit the next one, you're the most likely the one that's gonna get it. Just stick it on the agenda, and then we'll have it out right there on this whole topic. 'Cause I also would prefer Jim and Pat here to have, to give any sort of thing. So to me, if you don't mind, I'd go the other way and say, I'd just say, receive and file, and let's wait till the next one, and let's start, keep better track of what it is. Because going backwards is gonna be a lot of effort. And I'd rather not spend the effort on recreating history, 'cause things change all the time. I'd rather, when you get the next one, let's, even if you're like, this one's on the edge of nuts, like, if it's nuts, don't bother, but if it's on the edge, where you're like, maybe, then let's put it on and let's talk about it, and you just, you know, hey, I brought this one because we had talked about bringing the next one up. Here it is, and we'll see what we do.
But we're still talking about, if they're asking for a letter of approval from the city or opposition, whichever position they're recommending, that still has to come before council, right?
Well, I think that's part of the conversation, versus, hey, we put together a little philosophy.
Right, but it still would have.
The two of you kinda think, yeah, I think it's okay, and now we're firing out letters? I don't know.
But even those letters were gonna have to come to, even under that, they, it still came to us, the way I, that I was, anyway. So would you be okay with amending your motion to say?
Yes, that will, with the next time an issue comes, well, receive and file this, and next time it comes up that we, I think we should make a position on a, um, piece of legislation, then we'll discuss that and make sure we include in the motion that any further letters or that are needed in, in favor of this position will be able to be sent by staff. You know, if it's still, if the amendment is still a problem.
So on a case-by-case basis, maybe?
Okay, we can do that. We can try that. That would be.
And, and I think this is a perfect example of staff putting together a very good piece that made me not wanna do it. I mean, 'cause it seemed like a good idea when I read the first part, and then I went further, and I'm like, no way are we doing this. Anyways.
Uh, you're welcome.
Can I, can I just?
Yeah, how does that motion read to you?
Can I just clarify? So receive and file, and then
Have further discussion, uh, the next time a situation arises?
Sure.
We need a second.
Uh, and, and did you also want in there as, uh, Mayor Proton Piper asks that we track going forward, uh, any legislation that's coming before?
In the simplest of ways.
Okay.
So that's the motion. Do you have a second?
Yes.
It, all opposed, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Pat, were you gonna say something? Did we, no, okay. All right. Thank you on that. Um, matters from staff, fifteen A, receiving file of verbal update on the City Hall Landscape Design Grant Project.
That, that'll be me again. Uh, good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, so just a, a brief update on, uh, on this project. As you know, the project is completed. Um, staff is currently working with, uh, Mr. Bennett and his, uh, general manager on, uh, pricing, uh, just discussions around the final.
Uh, just discussions around the final costs. Uh, the grant monies, uh, we are expecting those in the next uh, two to three weeks from Cal Water. Uh, so the full amount, as was presented to you back uh, in the spring, uh, we will be getting for them. Cal Water was extremely happy, came out, did a inspection, uh, walk around, uh, and they were ecstatic. We are planning on having a ribbon cutting, uh, but it won't be uh, until the spring. We thought it might be better to wait for uh, some of the new plants since they were only one gallon to take root and uh, and grow. And uh, that's, that's pretty much the extent of my report.
Thank you, any questions for staff?
I did have a question, so have we not settled on exact price for the landscape work done by?
No, we have, we have the original estimates, uh, as as was presented. And then there was some council direction to, with not to exceeds for uh, for refixing the irrigation and whatnot. Um, we did this project, we didn't go out to bid on this project. We did it as part of our maintenance agreement. And within our existing maintenance agreement, we have some price points that were agreed upon uh, by Bennett and the city for things like uh, one gallon plants, five gallon plants. And um, in doing some due diligence, uh, staff realized that uh, we might have not been seeing those price points effectuated in the quotes. And so we're just calling out certain things that we thought should be noted and or changed. Uh, and we did have some issues with timeliness in terms of Bennett uh, completing the project. So uh, staff is currently working to try to resolve those issues in uh, the best manner possible.
Thank you, any other questions for staff? Any comments from the public on this item? Hearing none, um.
I'd make a motion, receive file?
Second.
Favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you very much. Um, fifteen B, receive and file a verbal update on the outdoor emergency siren project and citywide testing.
Good evening, Mayor Marsh and City Council. Um, recently, um, HQE presented a draft of the standard operating procedure to staff. And staff have reviewed that draft along with Chief Keane from the LA County Fire Department. And and we are awaiting feedback from Captain Guerrero from the Los Angeles Sheriff's Department and the Area G DMAC, Brandy Villanueva. We will follow up with both parties tomorrow and proceed to finalize the SOP. On October sixteenth, at HQE tested each siren individually to assess the output at all three siren poles. And this was not a full sound propagation test on that date. Uh, HQE conducted the second test on Wednesday, November sixth, from noon until three PM. The Products and Engineering Department of HQE led the test to validate and fine tune the system installation. Staff and HQE both were out in the field at multiple locations throughout the city on Wednesday. Uh, the city's three sirens were activated to measure sound pressure levels at specified points and assess sound propagation throughout the city's varied topography and environmental conditions. The goal is to achieve approximately seventy decibels, which is generally considered the threshold for effective audibility in outdoor warning systems. At the onset of this past testing on Wednesday, uh, it was discovered that the sirens had been inadvertently set to only ten percent of the maximum power uh, due to a safety setting applied during manufacturing and initial quality control. HQE subsequently adjusted the sirens and increased the volume uh, later that afternoon and the testing proceeded. Uh, throughout the all test locations, the eighty hertz tone consistently provided the clearest and most effective sound propagation. Moving forward, HQE represent, uh, recommends further testing and adjustments. Potential enhancements include frequency tuning. Adjusting the operating frequency slightly lower within the five hundred hertz to eight hundred hertz range uh, could improve sound propagation in these areas as lower frequencies are more resilient against natural obstructions and maintain audibility over longer distances. Um, as well, fine tuning uh, the directional orientation of the speaker arrays could help concentrate sound outwards towards low lying regions. These adjustments will help HQE strengthen coverage, ensuring that the siren system continues to perform optimally across all of Rolling Hills regardless of the terrain variations. The RHCA assisted the city with sending out uh, community wide feedback surveys via Dwelling Live. And the results were submitted to HQE last week along with uh, emails and telephone correspondences from Rolling Hills residents. Staff will meet with HQE this week to discuss their performance findings and learn what next steps will be taken to finesse this effectiveness of the siren system. We will uh, also provide our feedback regarding the standard operating uh, procedure during this meeting. And that concludes my report. Um, staff are available for any questions.
Thank you, Sam, any questions?
Yeah, I do. Um, you said the results from the survey that the association did were submitted to HQE. Do we have copies of the results as well?
Um, it, staff does have those copies, yes, and.
So what were the results? Because I heard some mixed reviews.
It was mixed, yeah. Um, so we, we definitely had some residents complaining that the sound was too loud, particularly those residents who are living in close proximity to the sirens, to the poles themselves. And then there's a lot of areas too that the sound just wasn't heard, um, outdoors and indoors. So and it is an outdoor siren system, so you know, the goal is to have it at seventy decibels, um, outdoors. But um, there are many residents that complained they did not hear it. So it's, it's still a work in progress. Um, HQE is looking at, like I said, you know, adjusting uh, the direction of this, the sirens and um, and working on the different uh, tones that they're, they're trying out, so.
But if if I may piggyback on to Sam's uh, comment there, uh, Councilmember Derringer. Um, when we went out to evaluate, uh, and you know, we sat uh, both at Poppy Trail and Portuguese Ben. We went down uh, by Councilmember Wilson's house. And then we went to Chestnut, uh, we were trying to go to pockets that were further away. Um, the one tone that did come through was in that eight hundred uh, hertz range. Uh, and and what they were playing repeatedly that day was a mixture of tones at different hertz levels. So none of them were lasting very long, uh, but it was, it was audible. You could hear in that range at the very, very beginning and then at the very end. And so what we haven't had is a, what would, I would say be a true test. Once the system is fully activated, where we're testing once a month to ensure uh, that it works properly. Uh, and then in the event, uh, but a continuous tone at that hertz level where it can carry and has time to propagate out. Uh, so that that I think is going to be interesting now to hear, does that carry? Because a quick one or two second blip at eight hundred megahertz is, is really not something, you know, I I it. It's audible enough for you to go, wait, what? And and then it's gone. So but to have something that's continuous will be better. And so that, it's a little bit anecdotal there for you, but I I think uh, we will have to see what the next step is for for us in the testing process.
And I do want to add that the um, on dwelling, you can actually see live as people kind of input their responses to the poll. You can see that in, on there. What you won't see are those that emailed us individually or called us. We, those are not in the the final poll numbers. But dwelling live, you can actually see who's responding, not specifically people, but their responses.
Then once they figure out the tones, are they, cause at some point, they're gonna have the thing talk.
Correct, so the the, it it's going, the, the way it will most likely work is that it will be a tone for fifteen to twenty seconds. And then the voice command, this is a test or, you know, this is uh, an emergency evacuate. And then it would end with a tone. So it's, it's typically going to go tone, voice, tone, uh.
Okay, so, and we're, I mean, I live yards from this one. And if I stood by the front door, like on the inside, I could hear it. But not enough that I would have paid attention if I wasn't paying attention. And then on the backside of the house, I think I could hear the one up on, by the crest, Eastfield Gate. Cause it wasn't, it was definitely, when I opened the window, it was definitely coming from over there. So that was, in my mind, that was good, cause I don't think I could have heard this one on the backside of my house with the windows closed. But one, what I heard from anybody I knew who was close to it was, please God, make it stop. Um, I heard that a lot from people, cause it just kept going. And I said, you got a thing, about fifteen things telling you this was gonna happen. And they said, well, I didn't read any of that, they just, so this was.
And I, I, I think that the. I think that the the test going forward would probably be a shorter time period. I think because they originally started off with, you know, the level's not correct. I don't think that that going forward, we'd have a test that lasted quite that many hours. We did, we did specify from noon to three, but um, I know the first test was shorter than that. So I think that, you know, going forward, I hope that it's not quite as long.
And then theoretically, I, I don't, maybe B was the one that said this, they have a product that I can plug in my house that.
There, there is.
Is, and I, we should find out what those things are and can you, are they battery and whatever? Because if it's a hundred, let's say it's a hundred bucks, people might just, even if the sirens are working exactly how they're supposed to, everyone's happy. People might stick them in their house, cause there's not, if all of our windows are closed, then we're not hearing any of this.
Correct, so.
So to put one inside that does that, that is either on a battery or whatever, the power's all out.
Right, and this, this week, we will be discussing that further with HQE. Uh, we do know that those units cost, I I think it was a hundred and forty dollars per unit. Um.
Sorry, Sam, how much?
A hundred and forty dollars per unit, yeah. And so um, I, they are battery operated and um, they would be able to coordinate with the system to, you know, have a louder volume inside the home.
The no big deal ad for a lot of people, just to stick one in their house for a hundred and forty bucks.
Yes, I agree.
I mean.
May need to be additional hardware attached to each pole to transmit to those. But uh, but we are collecting that data as we go through this process.
I mean, the the concern is, there's no cell service, I mean, when the power goes out is now all the lucky people with their generators now um, are able to keep going. But we have a generator, so I can keep all the internet going, I can keep everything going. But cell service doesn't work at all. The, I mean, there's no lights, there's no nothing. It just seems like this would be an easy thing that a lot of people, cause if I had one on my street, I'd make sure this is jamming's got out.
Yeah, I think, I think to your point, the generators, we have heard reports that um, residents live in, living in the impacted areas that have generators running, definitely harder to hear the sound. So these units would be really uh, a benefit.
And the whole idea, at least when we were going through the hearings regarding it, was that the siren system would be heard in the house. And, cause I've brought up that issue regularly. Yes, about the fact that people have double pane and triple pane windows and that they've, you know, in Malibu, they did a study and said that the sirens could not be heard inside the house. And if you're sleeping, that's the 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 most danger, cause we have the most people here in the, in the city when there's a fire or some other emergency, and yet they can't hear this, this siren. So uh, to me, it is not very useful at all if it can only be heard when you're outdoors. Uh, because most people don't hang outdoors. And so that's the thing, I think we we need to, uh, and I hope we haven't paid them yet because we've got some mixed reviews. Um, because I don't know if they're, I mean, hopefully, they still have an incentive to make it better. But if there's in fact, something where we need additional hardware um, to be able to hear the siren inside the house, even if people buy this a hundred and forty dollar unit, um, I think it, it needs to be done because it's, it's ridiculous that some people couldn't hear it at all. And I understand the people near it, and I don't know what, what the fix would be for that because it is what it is. You're near the, the pole. But um, it's better to be heard if you're in an emergency than not hear it. So I, I think we need to get that information from them as to what they're going to do uh, to make sure that these battery operated units, and is there a fix where you can just keep it plugged in and it doesn't make any noise except when there's uh, the siren activating? And that's what, what the um, the weather radios do, you know, whenever there's, only when there's emergencies, you can keep them plugged in and they're not emanating any sound, but only when there's an emergency and and so forth, so that's.
And the, the weather radios, I believe they, they respond the same way. And LA County has a grant that where we're distributing weather radios to the entire community um, free of charge for Rolling Hills residents. And you know, that is a question that I've been asking, is that, would that system be able to work in, in place of, you know, a hundred and forty dollar unit?
Yeah.
I don't know if it can, but that's something we're exploring too.
And having multiple units, that would be, so they didn't give you an answer to it?
It, the NOAA radios do not work with the system because the messaging is coming from the National Weather Service, not from the sirens directly.
Are much quicker, that would, that would, remember when we were talking about that when we were originally doing this? It was beca, one of the reasons that this was the preferable for us. We were not saying that those wouldn't be good. I remember you bringing them up when we were talking about it. But that the time it takes to get the National Weather Service to tell us that there's a fire in Rolling Hills could be much longer than that. And so I have to admit, I have two questions. The first one is, when you said this is called an outdoor siren. I never understood outdoor siren meant to imply that you could only hear it outdoors. I thought an outdoor siren was because it was an outdoor siren. It was a siren that was outdoors, not that you would only hear it.
Right.
Outdoors.
That was not my understanding either, that can only be heard outdoors.
Talk about that a lot, so let's just make sure that we're, you know, maybe that's a done deal and that's what it meant all along. And you know, more the fool may for not realizing that.
If, if I may, you, the final motion from the council when you approved the contract was to have the audibility of the sirens uh, be seventy decibels at the properties. So it was not specified indoors. And I think that ca, that culminated out of conversation with the representatives from HQE. Uh, but that's, that's what we stipulated. And so that's what staff has been holding the vendor to. But property is.
Correct.
A, a little bit of an ambiguous term.
Right, and and I can provide a bit more color on that. Obviously, HQE's response to a comment, well, how loud is it gonna be in the bedroom, in the living room? Is, well, we have no idea because we don't know if someone has triple plane pane windows. It's my understanding, and uh, Mr. Horvath can correct me if I'm wrong. HQE is dedicated to making sure this thing works. They, they, this is, they do not, not just for us, but I can, you know, I'm lucky enough to have my finger on the pulse of a few other cities. They think this is gonna be a very potentially lucrative business for them moving forward. And once again, I can't, I guess, speak for them authoritatively, but dropping the ball here is, is, is not something that, that, that would, is, is gonna be advised.
Yeah, it, yeah, and I think we all realize that's why they have been patient with us as we went through all this process and, you know. Yeah, so I, I'm saying it was a misunderstanding probably on my, my part, you know, thinking that it was called an outdoor, outdoor siren, so.
And and I just, I would like to add to that, cause I was very, you know, specific on that. And they were representing that the seventy decibels could be heard indoors, other than somebody like, you know, was, you know, like so sound asleep that they don't hear anything. But it was pretty much that, that it would be in, indoor audible.
Well, and I don't remember, it, if that's what we agreed to when we made the motion, that's what we agreed to. You may not have agreed to the motion, but if that's what passed, that's what, what passed. And so I, I get it now, this, again, another one of these things that as you're, you're learning as, as you go um, forward. And I even went down and listened to them down in Temecula. And I admit, I was outside when I was listening to them, I wasn't listening to them. I wanted to be outside. I was listening to them in their factory to see what it sounded like, so. But the other thing that I do have a concern about, to Jeff's point, these tones, whatever the decibel tones are, and they're different sounding tones. I heard different ones better than I heard the others. So I do have concern about the voice part of it. Because the voice may not be. So I do have concern about the voice part of it, because the voice may not be heard as well as the. Yeah, you're, you're correct, and they, they have stated that, that the voice command does not project sound as well as the, the tones. And then, the other thing, and maybe I need refreshing on this, is there was a concern when we were trying to place these at diff, at various locations. There was a concern about having them at the gates because of, you know, health, health concerns from the Association for the Gate Attendants. And we had said that it's not like this is going to be on all the time. They didn't even talk about having to do monthly testing. And I've now heard, the last couple of times we've talked about this, monthly testing. And I thought, my understanding was that they had, were going to be able to do tests of how, that, that the system was working without always, every month, having to do the, the big, you know, the sound, like you have to hear on your TV when they're doing, you know, the alert. So if you could check on that, I do have a question on that.
We can, we can get, uh, clarity on that. They, they do have the ability to check in on the system and, and, uh, and do testing to make sure that the equipment is working properly. So to your, I, you are correct, and they did state that. The, whether we test on a monthly basis, like a lot of other communities that have sirens do, that, that really is part of the standard operating procedure, and that would be up to, uh, the, the subcommittee, and ultimately, the council, as to whether you want to do that as a way to remind people that it's there, to make sure that it functions properly, you know, that, that is really ultimately your call.
Okay, because my question would be, is at some places, like, you know, if you're back in the Midwest, where they do tornado warnings all the time, well, people don't pay any attention to them, because they hear them all the time. And that part of the purpose of this, or one of the goals of this, was, hey, if you hear that alarm, if you hear the siren, not, not a test. You know, maybe if we do it, eh, you know, every, quarterly or something like that, but don't make it, if you're doing it every month, but my, that was my concern, so, anyway, so that's in, that's in their SOP that they recommended.
We're developing that SOP, and so I don't think we have a line item specific to that, but we will go in and add something about it, so that way it can be discussed at the subcommittee level.
I think you gotta hear what a test actually sounds like, because I think if you, the advantage of, oh, this, we hear this at noon on, eh, the first Wednesday of every month, and it's a minute long. To me, one reinforces that it exists and it works and all these sort of things. Because if it goes on and on and on for five or ten minutes, and I'm used to hearing it, because I think the first problem I had was, was it the siren?
Yeah.
Is that what I'm hearing?
Right.
Because.
And it kept changing.
Because we did on Wednesday, Wednesday is when my generator kicks on, and then also across the canyon, theirs kicks on to exercise right at noon, or whatever. And I was like, I'm trying to listen for this thing, and I can't tell between that and the nail guns and the tractors and the whatever. So I think part of that is learning what the sound is.
You're right.
All right, what else? Public comment?
Okay, any other questions?
No questions.
Public comment on this?
Did you just come for the entertainment of our?
No, I bet he was coming for public open agenda?
No.
No?
I think he's coming for my presentation. I have another, I have another app, side of this update that's coming.
I make a motion, receive and file?
Um, I would, second, but I would like to know, are we going to get another update? And, and with, whether we have, we paid them?
No.
Uh, yeah, oh, I mean, uh, we're, yeah, we're not done. We, we're, we're, we're going to finish this process in the next, uh, month. You know, that's our goal here, before the contract expires at the end of the year. So we'll be back with update either on the twenty-fifth or, and/or on the, uh, the tenth.
And so, the, the answer to my question, have we paid them, is?
We have paid, we've, I think we've paid two installments, I don't know if we paid the full amount.
We paid the second installment that we got, and that is, would not cover what the full contract is.
Okay. So. They gonna do any tests on a weekend, so people who work can actually, to tell, or they're, they're actually can hear this?
I, we can ask, I, I think, I don't know that they work on the weekends, uh, you know, the, all their construction was done Monday through Friday, so we can ask, uh, but, you know, then staff would need to come in and also, uh, work to, to help with the observations and, and whatnot.
Yeah, okay, I just think it should be imperative that we know that it actually functions the way it was purported or designed to function, that we received and.
That's our goal, and, and to the city attorneys, uh, they continue to really want to make sure they get this right. So, we're, we're working closely.
We've been working closely with them, we've been communicating with them, there was a little bit of a glitch, but that's been resolved, resolved. And I do want to add that the SOP that they're providing us, um, was as an in-kind service. Um, they had been reaching out to us roughly around September, early September, to coordinate with us to create from scratch the SOP, and we were seeking for their assistance on locating agencies that we can call. I mean, it was, it was a lot of work from the staff side to try to find this SOP. Um, and I think at the point where sta, staff just said, we need to stop, we can't keep doing all this research, we're shorthanded, we have this crisis that we're dealing with, and, um, in the form of an in-kind service, they provided that SOP at no additional cost to us. There is a cost associated with having them develop it for us. Uh, they, so they just gave it to us an in-kind service, they developed it, now we're refining it to what, what our expectations are. So, I think that's a step moving forward to their expectations to wanting to meet with, um, meet our needs. And if we need to continue to work with them and push to ensure that this works, we'll do that as staff, and we're going to keep providing these updates.
All right.
Okay, so what, where are we back with the receiving file?
Yeah.
All favor?
Aye.
Pose, hearing none?
Who was the seconder on that?
Oh, I think I made, I made.
You made the motion.
I think, I, I said yes, but I want to know this.
I just wanted to make sure.
Or yes, but, yes, but.
Great, Madam Mayor, there is one additional agenda item that I wanted to, um, share with you from our last, um, uh, weekly update that I sent out. I collaborated and connected with the, sorry, I connected with CalOES to learn a little more about the RPV, um, voluntary buyout program, among other programs that could be made available to staff, so we can offer it to the residents. It's really just an update as to what was discussed, but I do want to share, um, a couple of highlights at this time, if it's, if it's okay with Madam Mayor and council to do so, yes? Okay, I'll like hurry up, go through it, I will. Um, so last week, staff met with, um, the California Office of Emergency Services to discuss the voluntary buyout program that was recently made available through RPV. Um, CalOES manages the Federal Emergency Management Agency FEMA Hazard Mitigation Assistance Programs that focus on mitigating risk to natural hazards. Um, for FEMA's, um, Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, their projects are, they have many different types of programs and projects. Um, they do have to be eligible and feasible per program guidelines and federal regulations. They have to be cost-effective, and they have to pass the benefit cost analysis using FEMA software and methodology. They also have to pass an environmental and historic preservation review, which is the EHP. This includes the National Environment Protection Act and CEQA, also on tribal consultations. So there's a lot of coordination that occurs, uh, when going through the EHP. Now specifically, as it relates to the buyout program that was recently offered to the city of RPV, the voluntary buyout program is, um, typically offered when a federally declared disaster occurs instead of, in the state of California, and it becomes, California becomes ineligible for funds through FEMA's Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. The current voluntary bro, program is funded through HMGP funds, and was currently logged under the atmospheric rivers from the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three winter rains. Because CalOES has been working closely with RPV, they were able to, I won't say it happened quickly, but they were to, they were able to move other quickly, simply because they had a lot of data already gathered, and they were already working with them with other grants that they apply for, and, um, they were eligible for. So the buyout program is one of the FEMA's most preferred programs, um, as a ha, hazard mitigation project type, because it permanently reduces the risk for people, first responders, um, because the human aspect and the public safety aspect is essential to the comm, to the area. But it can also have some type of en, environmental benefits. The buyout process itself was formulated with flood hazards in mind, because FEMA is tasked with reducing losses to the natural flood insurance program. The buyout process procedures, regulations are all coming with that kind of flood lens in mind. Um, this is very popular in the Southwest and Midwest, um, sorry, Southeast and Midwest in terms of helping communities after a really big hurricane or where a river flooding event occurs. But what's interesting now that it's being applied to land movement, which is ve, a very new type of hazard. In California, CalOES has done landslide buyouts or land movement, um, buyouts for the typical coastal erosion or landslide hazards, where some of, or some sort of erosion has occurred. Um, the reason why I'm bringing this to your attention is because, um, RPV's program did create a lot of, um, questions, and a lot of traction was picked up, and in fact, we were informed that there is a, um, residents both from our city and other cities such as Rolling Hills Estates that also applied for this program through RPV, and has been specifically reaching out what we can do as, as an agency. Now, this is not just the only program that CalOES has available through FEMA's program, there's many others. And it is the staff's intent to continue to do its due diligence in researching how these programs best fit our community. Um, for RPV in particular, they had a short window to get these applications in, because they want to get it during this current, um, allocated funding that's available. And they did have some rigorous procedures in order to become eligible, so your home had to been red-tagged, yellow-tagged, and/or fall under the third category, which is under the utility shut-offs. Um, they started off with very few red home, red-tag homes, there weren't that many, but now that the application became available, so did the doors open, with more homes becoming red-tagged than yellow-tagged. So, really, the purpose of this presentation is to present to you, but also to the members of the community that are potentially listening in, and that, um, this is staff's report out to the council, and will continue to do some research to ensure that the best program fits for our community. We'll bring it back to the city council for review and consideration. And I believe this is why we have a, a member of our community present, because, um, it's something that came up in, in many of our conversations with residents. And that concludes my presentation, Madam Mayor.
Any questions?
Correct, yeah, Madam Mayor, I just want to be sure, obviously, it's not on the agenda, of course, this is just a, a presentation. You guys are, are free to receive that, and of course, if you want to provide public comment, I'm of course not going to stand in the way of that. But there's not really, we're not really looking for any direction, nor can you guys take any formal action, other than, of course, ask questions, inquire, and then, of course, you know, digest that, and if you have any questions or concerns to Madam City Manager you want to bring about offline or at a future meeting, that would be the time to do it.
So, if we have.
Questions, perfect.
Questions.
Yeah.
About it, can we?
Yes, absolutely.
Ask them, even though it's not.
Correct, yeah.
Agenda.
Right, I just want to be sure we're not taking any formal action, this is just a report, yeah.
I do have a couple of questions. My understanding on FEMA is that traditionally FEMA monies are only available or eligible when there is public infrastructure impacted. Is that, is that understanding now incorrect?
Um, which would then result the local agency declaring a local emergency, not for this program. It doesn't require the agency to declare a local emergency. It is heavily reliant on the presidential, um, placing a declaration of. Sorry, uh, well, this one was declared, um, due to the most recent rivers, yeah.
So it doesn't require the city to declare a local emergency?
I, it becomes available.
I understand, but for the applicability, listen, if somebody's willing to buy my house now, I would probably move, so don't get, don't get, I'm not against this. I'm just a little concerned or confused, because when we looked at FEMA before, forgetting who would, when a disaster had, had, was already declared, during, th, as a matter of fact, this, this very event, when we were trying to look at the, um, sinkhole, for example, when we were looking into this, that, and everything that I looked at at that time, talked about public, it, it's, it's very specific, and it had a list of things, you know, roads, schools, parks, libraries, municipal buildings, all, all, all kinds of things that were in, included along there, but they were all public. Now, once you get the FEMA money, maybe you can do other things with it, like this specific program. But, I.
Yeah, and I can most certainly follow up with your specific question. Like I said, we're scheduled to meet with them again this coming week to get more information. Um, but from our light conversation that we had about this topic, it's still considered a grant, so you still have to receive the monies. There's a seventy-five percent and a twenty-five percent allocation, that's a lender. So, uh, in regards to specific public infrastructure being damaged, I, I don't have those specifics. I'll, I'll make sure while I come back and I provide that information at a later time.
Because, because, I mean, I, and I'm right with you, is, we didn't declare an emergency, because it was no value to anybody here for doing so. And all that would say is, Edison, you're right, which is, we're never going to say those words. So, there's the first part, we didn't, there's a whole bunch of things we didn't do, because it was no value to the residents. Now, if all of a sudden they said, hey, Rolling Hills, here's forty-two million dollars for you guys too, and all you have to do, we'd be much more game to play along with whatever they needed, if there's a value. Because right now, my stance on this is, there's no emergency, because there's no value, and I don't want to validate anything Edison the gas company has ever said out loud. And we're going to go pick a fight with them over a whole bunch of different things. And on top of that is, all those things right now, as you, we were talking before this about our real estate friends, and stay away from Palos Verdes in general and whatever, all those things are stigmas that are going to make, when this gets under control, whatever the heck that means, it's going to get stuck on houses, it's going to make it much harder to sell them for even what they're worth through this process.
And this is why we, we are having these conversations, because this, this is us inquiring to see if this program is the best fit for our community. And a lot of it is having staff to do the research along with CalOES, and then provided us with the resources to get this research done. We can come back with that information, this is just a report out that we have connected with them. And there's a lot more questions that are out there, and, and myself, along staff, I mean, we, we're still trying to peel the onion back to see if this is the best fit, but it is still considered a grant, and they are taking applications, and they're trying to see how this best fits communities. But what we don't have, which RPV has, is they're reliant heavily, heavily on, on data.
So, to follow up on the, the issue, whether we declared a state of emergency was, isn't really relevant to this, but the declaration that came, was that to the, that ultimately come down to the city of RPV? Or was it the Palos Verdes Peninsula that was declared? I think there was some wishy-washy in there, and so.
Okay, clarification.
If, if you could look into that as well. That would be a question that I have for when it, when it comes back for our consideration, to have that addressed specifically. Any other questions?
I do. So, um, Madam City Manager, so I, if I understand you correctly, that in your discussions with CalOES, they did not say that our city, and it, or the residents affected by like, eh, by any type of utility shut-off would be eligible for this program, they did not indicate that.
I'm sorry, that if, if we had to have declared a local?
No.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that, rephrase that.
We, we can't get a piece of the forty-two million.
Oh, the ones right now?
Yeah.
Not at this time, I think that's, we haven't submitted any type of application, we haven't provided any, any data.
Okay, and, but I'm just saying, going forward, um, are you saying that this program, the, the voluntary buyout program, does not require a local emergency? Did you not say that?
That's correct, I did say that.
So, um, and that is from CalOES? Yes.
Right.
And so then, the question then is, did CalOES say that based on, um, utility shut-offs, that residents in our city would be eligible for this voluntary buyout program, yes or no?
That was RPV's structure, how they utilize. That was RPV's structure, how they utilized their program. We'd have to still do some research to see if we could become eligible utilizing that as one of our options.
Right, so the, the, the conversation that staff had is very preliminary at the infancy stage. So the nuances of who may or may not be eligible, what steps staff, the city may or may not have to take, we simply don't have those, those answers right now. That's what Madam City Manager is going to inquire, flesh out the details. As she said, it's a pretty, you know, ever-changing, you know, set of factual circumstances. She just wanted to keep you all updated, and of course, the public in a, in a, in a public setting. So down the road, it doesn't come out of the blue, hey, look at, this is what it is. Those specific program questions, we simply don't have answers because as we just, we, we haven't started that process, yeah.
But these are great questions to ask, and this is part of the conversations that we're having with them and how it worked for them. May not necessarily a one size fits all for our, for all agencies, but we're very similar in how they're, um, receiving the grant funding.
It is just a little unu- unusual to have it, it's not an agenda item, and, and I'm glad to have it. So, Mr. Wall, um, you get to get in on the very ground floor on this before, you know as much as we know, you probably know more.
Well, thank you. Um, no, I've actually spoken with Karina about this and some of the staff, and before I asked you not to lend credence to let the utilities off the hook, but this is different. It seems like there actually might be a benefit for the residents. And for us personally, it would be really helpful because, uh, is this being recorded?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Well, I'll just say it. We have 28 years left on our mortgage. We don't know whether to put a new roof on, or put in solar, or let it sit, or what to do, or get a renter. We're going to be upside down in value. We are hemorrhaging cash on this. And so I don't know what to do. It, this buyout program would actually be very helpful for us personally, and I'm sure it would help a lot of other people. Because, you know, we could actually, you know, move forward. And right now, I don't know if we're throwing good money into a place that's going to crack up further. I was actually looking at a place with a renter, potential renter. And off in the distance, I looked at Burma Road, and there was a waterfall. There's never been a waterfall there, because there was probably some pipe burst that was pouring out. And I thought, is that going to happen to us? Is it going to continue to crack up? Are we throwing good money after bad? It's going to take us hundreds of thousands of dollars just to get it rent ready. We aren't there, we can't be there with our kids right now. We had to move in with my in-laws. And I, I hope that for security reasons, that's why I asked if it was being recorded. I've had four moving trucks come out of our place, and we're still, you know, it's, it's horrible for us. And so this is our last chance to, to get out, because insurance doesn't cover any of this. We don't know what to do. And so I'd ask that the council please move with a lot of speed to find out if we qualify, because my preliminary conversations with Karina, it sounded like we might. And so for the buyout program, because I don't know whether to have the roofers go forward or not, because of the way the RPV program works is, and forgive me with my understanding at, at basic level, they value the place as of, at least the way they structured it, December 1st, 2022, before the landslide occurred. And so if I put on a new roof, does it really affect my valuation as of December 1st, 2022? It's throwing good money after bad, but at the same time, my mortgages due every single month. And if I want to have a place to live with my kids closer to their school, because we had to switch, now paying two mortgages. And I don't know, so I'd like, if you could move with all kinds of speed on this, I would be grateful, because we probably would be ones that would be interested in going forward with the buyout, although we consider it our home, and it's really hard for us. It was our forever home, and I still think of Rolling Hills that way, but, uh, financially, it's just too much strain. And so I don't know if others would be that, feel that way as well, but the other thing is, we do qualify. And Rolling Hills is very few, the hierarchy, as I understand from speaking with staff, is you go to red tagged homes, then yellow tagged homes. We don't really have any red tagged homes. We maybe have a couple of yellow, or I don't know if that's true or not, very many, very few if any. Don't really have any yellow tagged homes, we're part of it's useful, usable, and part of it's not. But we have a lot of utility shut off homes. And so a lot of people are going to elect to stay and others wouldn't. But if we could get a grant and let, help people out of this horrible situation, where I don't know whether to take care of our deferred maintenance or not, and time just keeps going by, I, I, I would really be grateful, especially, if we could qualify for that program, it's, it's the last bit that we have of hope, to be frank. That's why I'm here.
One, thanks for sharing, is, we're taking this extremely seriously. We're going to go as fast as we can, as small as we can. Government is the slowest, craziest thing you've ever seen. And RPV got on this, but they didn't tell us ahead of time. So then, here we are. You learned about it the same day we learned about it, which is the same thing, and, and now it's at the top of the pile. So I say that because you're going to be frustrated at the speed, because we're going to be frustrated at the speed, she's going to be frustrated at the speed, because it's going to take way longer than it should. And there's nothing we can do about it, just how it moves. So just know that we are doing our best, because this was, in my mind, the first thing that's been thrown out, that I'm like, that might work, out of all the other options we've had so far.
Yeah, my, my unders- I'm sorry, Mayor Murch.
No, I, I was just going to tag on to that, that we can't give staff any direction or anything, like, uh, tonight, a- a- as you heard, but just by the very fact that this verbal update was given today, that you were aware of that even before we were, so that you, we had to be here, we didn't know this was going to be discussed. You knew it was going to be discussed before we did. Very fact that the council and staff has addressed this even at this speed, I can't give any direction, but I can say I think that does indicate that we are going to be moving quickly on this, and I would guess that we would be, I'm not giving direction, but I would guess that this would certainly be on our agenda at our next council meeting. Would that be a safe guess?
I mean, so, correct, now, once again, we can't guarantee what kind of response we are going to get from CAL OES.
Right.
Um, but all of your assumptions, Madam Mayor, I believe are astute and accurate in terms of staff's understanding of the situation as, you know, the, the, and the residents' scenario, this is not something to let languish.
And that we'll be engaged.
Well, thank you. It's not meant as a criticism. The reason I called in, saw it on the news, read articles about RPV and thought, well, does that apply to our city too? And I called the city count, uh, city and got the hold of the staff, and I said, well, funny you should call, we're going to a meeting about it today. And so, um, I just, in our personal circumstance and others, it would be very helpful before everybody goes off grid to find out if the house is going to be demolished in the first place, which would also help with a lot of other tangential issues going on in the city as well. Water use, security, uh, views. So for a lot of reasons, it would be helpful, but, um, at this point, and I know staff very much cares, I can tell that. Uh, and at this point, um, I guess if we could piggyback off of whatever work RPV has done to help accelerate the process and find out if that's even applicable, with whatever fine tuning needs to be done for the city, that would help expedite, I would think. But I also know we're coming up in the holiday period, and things slow down, and what, budget time, and so it would be helpful to, as I'm sure that the, the city could, staff could keep me updated, as well as others, because I need to know, are we going to put in all that money for the solar? Are our plants going to die? What's happening to our pool? Are we fixing that roof that's end of life? You know, and what do I tell the potential renter who was very much interested? Are we going to be upside down on our mortgage, or are we going to actually have an out? So that would be helpful.
Here you go.
When is the next meeting?
November 25th.
Thank you.
Thank you.
She, she's gone.
Yeah.
She's gone?
Yes.
Was it Mrs. O?
I do not know. It wasn't her.
Oh, okay. All right.
And so, there's no...
Okay, um, hearing nothing else, uh, we're going to recess into closed session.
8:39 I have, Mr. City Clerk.
Me too. Thank you.
I'm not looking.
So, Madam Mayor, if I may give my closed session report. The City Council recessed into closed session at 8:39 PM pursuant to the items listed on the agenda. Dr. Black did join us midway through closed session. The City Council reconvened into open session at 9:41 PM and no reportable action was taken.